It's a property.
Well, Zibo would not have listed. Zibo would not list it. But that property is the Long Island County.
Just this short.
Okay.
Please share my got short.
Perfect.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Do you have a chance?
Where you going?
They'll tell him one day. Probably Mama's bag.
That is quite easy, really. See me catch all. I'm on the river. The old river. And that's not the. That's not it. People in your, you know. I mean, a whole lot of people know it's public. No. They asked me not to pick the elements. Most of it was Zibo. No. That was because I knew they were developers.
I think it's a part of that development. And it is, and was approved by them. I like deals with their.
Oh, it's decent.
If they were open, that's where I'd want to go.
Yeah. What she talking about, see if they give. You were still.
We need to keep watching.
There was a bit of.
Trying to exit. See, me and John Ketcher. We didn't have to eat. And doing the soft open and stuff. We didn't know.
Did it get hard on the wall?
Yeah.
Still there.
We didn't eat because they had a limited menu. Had their dang gum tea.
We go to Dill and Mama the town. I hate to steal. Go 24.
I know where it's good.
Where it's good. And I tell you, grapes is serving a good breakfast right there, too.
We've been there one time right after it. It's been long.
They don't get it on their food. They get a very good.
Well, we live right across. For us, it kind of sees what the crowds like to talk to. They can take in.
Now that she doesn't have to worry about somewhere. She just has to have one location. It's probably a little bit easier. Sarah loves shrimp and ribs.
So we got to get us started. We didn't want to stay in here. We're followed up with.
Father in heaven, we come again now thanking you for life, health, and strength. We come blessed in your name because your name waited to be blessed. Fathers, we come before this county, this city, this state, this country. We come with honesty and sincerity in our heart to do what's right to help our citizens. Father, in the due and devised plan that will be beneficial for us for years to come. We ask your guidance right now, Father, in special way. And we thank you. We thank for what you're going to do and what you've done thus far. These blessings and all other blessings we ask in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm hoping one coming this Monday, March 3rd, 2025, 6:00 p.m. We have a conference call. And number there is 1-917-900-1022. Access through 32347 panel. This is how I told freedom, you may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. When the chairperson opens the meeting for public comment, please follow the lower instructions. You wish to speak, please dial star line, moderator, without using your microphone to speak, and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes of time. The commentator may only speak one time each, and he will. With that, move on to three before we get an approval. Did everyone see the? It's not an addition. We just moved one item off consent to, or we did have an addition, line eight. Then we moved line B. We brought it from consent to line B. And then as well as, we'd like to move, that request to move item nine, our budget discussion right after our consent items. Is there any issue with that? If there's no issue with that, we will obtain a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? All right, we'll go to our consent items. Does everyone have a chance to look over your consent items? Any questions, questions?
Want to approve?
We have a budget that we should approve. We have a thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, all in favor?
I don't.
All right, we'll go to item nine now. The board to further discuss the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budgets presented by. Mr. David English. Yeah, I mean, in lieu to the discussions that we've been having on our budgets. We know we got some tough times coming ahead and we figure that we need to get some information out there so we all got something to work on, you know. So these are just some items that I have pulled some info from and requested the info. And it's, these are just the constitutional offices and budgets and where they are. I'm just going to go over really in low specific order, just the budgets and then maybe some recommendations. You know, I did the constitutional offices. I did get some, I had requested cement funds, insurance, which I didn't, I didn't get back till today. So I didn't have any facts to do to based on what I have yet. So I mean, I'll just go over, you know, in low technical order, the constitutional officers and some recommendation proposals and what we could do there. I got the sheriff's. And this is really just off of our last approved budget, our 2024, 2025 budgets. So we got the sheriff, we're at 9,253,000 today. I would recommend propose a 15% reduction. That would be basically a 1,388,000. Moving on to, where we at? Supervisory election. Today, the approved budget is 733,578. Recommend a 10% reduction there at $73,357. To our tax collector. Again, today, our approved budget is $413,680. I recommended 10% there at reduction. That's $41,368. Looking at our property appraiser, our budget today is 1,768,15. I propose a 10% reduction there. That'd be $107,681. And our clerk would be 1,121,664. Propose a 10% there. That would be 112,166. Those numbers would total up to 1,722,596. So like I said, this is just a start for numbers to get us started, open up discussion for other options, you know. We do have the one cent money. I know we split that in half between the hospital and the sheriff. And that's another, roughly, I'd say it's, I don't think we have a dividend number, but it's 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, I think. So, I mean, if we, I'm not saying we keep all that and do anything, but if we did, then we're looking at roughly 2.9 million dollars. And we're looking for 3.3 to 3.4 million dollars. That's, that's what we got to go by. That's based on the numbers our property appraisers have presented to us a little while back at one of our meetings. So like I said, I do have some, maybe some helpful numbers, but I didn't have a chance to go through that to give any solid recommendations. So I just, I really want to shoot from the hip. So that's what I would propose that we potentially look into. I mean, if anyone else have any other recommendations, I'm open. Now, we do, I have spoken with the administrators. And there are some other line items that we probably could cross out. We just need to kind of really go through those. Would have been too calm to see what, see how it would affect any organization in one way or the other. So I think, I know she had mentioned roughly a couple hundred thousand dollars there the other day, but we just, we didn't, we were just talking pretty quick, just naming some items. So, I mean, any other discussion, any other questions?
So the total was 2.9, is that what you said?
That's if we kept the entire one cent money, which we, we've always split half to the hospital and half to the sheriff. I mean, that's, that would be 2.9 million dollars. The reduction from our constitutional offices and roughly 1.2 million from the one cent money. That would bring it up to 2.9 billion. And, you know, for that, I mean, our property appraiser had mentioned 3.3, 3.4, but it could be more than that, you know, whenever we get solid. So, yes, that was 2.9, including the one cent money if we did.
Yeah, no. If we decide to keep the one cent, the 100% of the one cent sales tax, then we would have to, Conrad, would we have to have changed, what would we have to do? Because right now, it's earmarked for capital improvements and not operating funds. So we would have to change that, right? By doing what?
I'd have to research that. I'd have to research that for you.
Okay. Do you think we can do that, or you have to research that too?
I think I have to research that too.
Okay. So until, until we hear about it from our attorney, we can't really make any decisions because that's what over a million dollars. So if we can't do that, then that brings us back down to basically 1.9, which leaves us woefully short.
Yeah, I mean, we're bringing back down to 1,722. What it would bring it back down to, based on.
What was on it?
See, it would bring us back down to 1,722 if we could not do anything with the one cent money.
Yeah, and so then we're going to figure out, you know, what are we going to do to get to 3.1 and 3.3 million other than raising taxes, fees, and special assessments and taking it out of the reserves?
Well, I would, you know, I would caution the reserves because, I mean, we know that it's a minimum. Minimum. Three years before we see any type of businesses come in and bring any revenue to this area. And that's just a minimum. So if we start it now, and you already know you're going to have to do it for the next two, for the next three to four, even five years.
What, have to do what?
If you start that practice now, then you'll end up in that same practice the next three to four to five years. And I'll be honest with you, I think now it's going to be steady gear if we started that kind of practice.
And it could be longer because we're not guaranteed that we'll get anything. And I know we've got people that are working very, very hard and doing everything they can do, but there's no guarantee that we'll attract any businesses. And like you say, it's going to be quite a while before we see any revenue from. So, I mean, we're going to need to hear from our attorney when he says we want to get that.
Mr. Chairman, you made the comment that it was 50% for the sheriff, 50% for the hospital. In actuality, it's 20% to the sheriff this year of the one cent sales tax money. 25% to the hospital, the rest of the county keeps. So it's.
Well, I mean, I guess we split 50% in half. So the number is.
Actually, we gave up 5% this past budget year. So we went to 20% on the one cent money. But that's where our capital outlay for everything else comes from. So if you cut that out, you got to come up with it somewhere else. And you're talking one point, how many million for the sheriff?
That would be a million 388, based on.
As I told you before, the only way we're going to get to those kind of numbers is decrease in force, reduction in force. There's nothing else in there that we could do except reducing the force. And you're going to have, we're going to have more arrests at the jail. You're going to have immigrants coming in. That's been mandated by the governor, it's been mandated by the president. We ain't going to have no choice but to take care of them. There's going to be more of those on the street. I don't mean to be speaking for the sheriff, but I mean, I'm just pointing out the obvious facts. It's, you, to get to 1.3, you're going to have to cut personnel. That's the only way to get there.
And then you go cut services and ain't nobody going to be happy. I just know, no business out there, no business. And these are all businesses ran for this community. There's just no business out there that can take a loss like this and then not have to make a change.
Also, I don't think you're taking into account, the budget is 9.1, but you get back almost $700,000. You get buddy 565,000 back from the school board that goes directly to you from our budget. And you get, I think it's $200,000 from the city right at it for the dispatch center. And then you also get reimbursement from the 911 money that you put up front. So yes, our budget up front has 9.1 million, but you're getting almost a billion dollars back that's reimbursed from other areas.
Did I count that?
Yes.
From the 9.2?
Yes, yes. You fronted up front, but you get that refund back.
I mean, that's just numbers that we would.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, you need to be aware of it, that yes, you fronted up front, but every quarter you get a portion of the school, of the 565. And the school only gives us salary money. They don't give us any money for equipment, for fuel, for anything else.
And that's why we're having a discussion.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, but so I was letting you know that those go back into your coffers directly to you. They write the check to the board of county commissioners. They don't write them to us.
Yeah, I guess the law would need to allude to what we do. The law would need to confirm what we do with this money. We get this $700,000 back, then where does it go? This is all got to be looked, it's all got to be looked at. We sit here and not talk about it, and it all fall on deaf ears, and then here comes July budget season, and we're going to look here, so we're not done. And if we didn't do anything, then it's the wrong thing to do.
I mean, I just needed you to know that that comes back off of the. Yeah, 9.1. So it's really, if you take a, giving back almost a million, then you're looking at really an 8.1 million dollar budget for the jail and sheriff's office, not, not about, you know.
There's no guarantee that we'll continue to get that with the way things are. But you know, it's tough.
It is, but now.
It's tough for everybody. And, you know, we are charged with balancing our budget. And I don't want to have to make any cuts, but we are where we are and we have to do what we have to do. I understand, I understand each constitutional officer and I understand every department. Nobody wants to cut. I get it, but we have to, we have to.
So the school board has, by law, they have to fund the school resource program. They have to fund that salary. So you will get that. The city pays half of the salary portion for dispatch. That will continue as far as, we haven't been notified by the city that that would not continue. And then, of course, you get money back off some of the grants and stuff that we write to at the end of the year as we turn it back in, so.
Yeah, we're going to just, the stuff's going to have to be laid out. I mean, it's going to have to be laid out on paper to know exactly what. Nobody wants to be trying to hurt anyone, no one to do anything for any personal reason. I mean, I think we all seen the situation that we're in, that we're going at our face with. And it's just not going to be any easy fix to turn around overnight. And before we go to raising taxes, I mean, we have to just cut the bottom line off of some of these budgets. And I didn't, I didn't add the public work to the root department because there's really been the increase there. I think we may have had a decrease, if anything. That is what I, that's what I saw, the numbers that I have. So I didn't, and we're, you know, we're on our roll-off side, you know. I mean, we're in a, we're in a crunch over there with equipment, with trucks running and such as that. So I mean, we, but that's all another line item of solid waste assessment. Falls under solid waste assessment, so. Started here. You know, we got some insurance numbers, and I do know that that's, insurance is what really keeps people attracted to these jobs here. But, you know, we just, we have to look at all of it. We can't just go and just look at certain pieces. We have to look at all of it. So I've just made some recommendations. And if there's $700,000 coming back to the county that I need to confirm that we're getting $700,000, you know, the money out of our bank, and then where does the money go? Does it go back in? Does it go back in the pot? What do we, what do we use it for? Is it?
I place something in the half of the hospital part of the one cent sale back. The hospital contract says they supposed to do maintenance. But they got a grant to get 1.6 million dollars to put a roof on the hospital of roofs that was old, year 20 something year old. And they got that done. They've already put that, it's going to get put on it. And they got that grant, and that saved us 1.6 million dollars. We would end up, that wasn't maintenance, that was just go out. And we would end up spending 1.6 million dollars putting the roof on the hospital. So they've got a lot of things going south at that hospital that they haven't worked on beside maintenance. And to keep that thing going, they really got it in the best shape it's been in years. And it's running up front like it should finally after all these years. And I sure don't want to put them in the bind, of course, you know, for people who got to have a hospital. But I just wanted to put that out there.
I don't think we want to throw anyone in a bind. But again, we're, we know what. Have to make the decisions that's going to.
Yeah.
We can run this cap.
I understand.
Really, roughly, a minimum of 3.3 million dollars.
They've already, they've already thrown 1.6 million dollars in the pot themselves by getting that grant. Corey Simon said they didn't get that and got that money for them. And without that, they would have, we would have had to come up with that 1.6, yeah. Wanted the people to know that.
I don't mean to be throwing rocks, but the hospital contract also says that they would provide the ambulance service. And we're doing that now. And that's what, a million dollars?
About 800.
So, I mean, you know, we took that off of their hands.
We did that to help the constituents of Taylor County have a decent ambulance ride in, too.
We had to, we had to take it up. We had no choice.
Yeah, it was our choice. We could have left it the way it was, but it would cost us a lot more money to do it the way it was.
Well, let me think then. Now, the money we was giving the hospital was 25% for one cent sale. That money hadn't built up any? We wasn't giving it all out every year, or would we?
It has, it's built up some, and, and they are trying to expend it. But it's something that, you know, we have to help, it goes through the county. We don't, you know, we don't provide the funds for them. We make the purchases on their behalf. And we are processing those, I think about five at a time. So there was maybe a couple of years that they did not expend the money, and now they are expending it, absolutely.
You know, I agree, we need some hospital, we need some medical, professional medical services. But when time comes and the budget gets tight, we all need to stop and look at it and say, maybe we don't need to spend 120, uh, 250,000 dollars this year out of that Missouri for the hospital. And I know it's tight. But there's other things we probably could look at. The school board was paying how much to the city and the county for resources? Just Sarah's alone? Is that all they're doing?
They just pay it to the county. I think, I think the current contract's 565,000. I didn't bring that exact figure, but I believe that's what it is.
The governor comes out here and he said, he didn't ask us to do this. He said, you gone do it. Said, we had to get it done.
Yeah. Mandate with that compensation, huh?
We got it done with what we had.
You go back to the governor and tell him, hey, you mandated now compensation.
Any other questions, discussion? I mean, if there's nothing else, I may just wrap up this discussion with.
I'll say something.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention on the health insurance, you know, one of the things that we talked about this year was bidding it out and looking at some different plans, like maybe some leisure plans or something like that. And so I think that, I would like to see the board go that route and try to, and pump and save the same amount of money or more instead of making the employees pay more, because I feel like that's going to hurt our participation, which then in turn will probably hurt our, our loss ratio and our renewal. So, you know, certainly, we deserve what we do, but, you know, I'd like to see us. We talked about it before about doing that. And I told the insurance agent that they're ready to, they're ready to bid it out and see what we get. And we think we should, we should. Yeah.
We think we can save some money, but yeah, we should, definitely, we should do that.
How long was that process?
Um, so I, I believe that, I think in, I think we have to start it in May, don't we? I think we have to start it in May and get the numbers back in June, I think. So it's like a month process. So, so, yeah, so we can, they could probably do it a little bit earlier. They like to get as much data as they can on the current year before they do it. So probably in the first of May, we can ask them to go ahead and roll with that and see what we get. I think we, I think we would get a good rate, but, you know, we'd have to see. So maybe we could have both options on the table and get a good rate or something. And that'd save us some money that way.
If we could get a better insurance rate, that's what we should be doing. But I'm a little hesitant when it comes to our employees having to pay more for their insurance policies. A lot of people work here because of the insurance and they're dependent on that. You know, what, what we could do, and I don't want to go into a whole lot of specifics now, but before we punish the employees, let's look at the travel. LaWanda, over every constitutional officer and every department, how much annually do we spend on travel?
I don't know, I'll have to check.
Any guess?
It's really not.
Just come back with a figure, but.
It's not that much.
We could cut out, I'm sure, several, several thousands of dollars if we cut out paying for travel. I will tell you, some people say, well, this is required. But when people came and worked for the county, I'm sure they knew that they had continuing education or something. And just cut, just don't pay for the travel. That's one thing to consider before we punish all our employees.
Let me say something.
Go ahead.
There's only two departments here that looks like it's over a million dollars. Should the value of election is four hundred, is what, seven hundred thousand dollars? Taxes collected is four thirteen? Big budget, but it's not big as it could be. What's the other one?
Yeah.
Property of race, how much is it?
Thirty million seventy-six.
The big is one twenty-one. Gary is nine point two million.
So you hear, I said, when you take all his out, it's about eight point seven.
So, uh, that just kind of.
I would like to see the constitution office tell us, we know what you want, but this is what we can do and we see where we at. You know, if we have to go back to the taxpayer and says we need to raise mileage or we have to go to the taxpayer and says we have to cut services. Are you willing to do that or are you, the taxpayer is going to bet it wrong? Bottom line, if we cut anything, say, am I right, Gary? And there's no way to get it. If you ain't got it, you ain't got it. I would like to see the, what the constitution office tell us, we just kind of have this. I would guess.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I make a, I've made a recommendation, I do, to follow up on the, the recommendation. I mean, I would, I think, just basically want to check on the one cent money to see what can be done there. And then maybe, Wanda, can we check on the, maybe the roughly seven hundred thousand dollars that were?
That's accounted for in the revenue, so it's, it does, it's not, it's, it's part of the offsetting revenue for the sheriff's expenditures. So it's already part of the budget. Was that your question? It's accounted for.
Yeah, I know, you, uh, Tom could have mentioned there was seven hundred thousand, so where does it go? And do we see, I'm sure we see that money, but.
I mean.
Reserve, I guess.
No, it's, it's part of the, it's, it's part of the calculation of the revenue. So it's, it's no different than a department that funded by a grant. It's, you know, that's the revenue offsetting the expenditures, right, Gary?
Right, yeah, it's already, it's already budgeted, it offsets expenditures, so, you know, if you could say it offsets, you know, um, their budget. I mean, they, they got, they got an expenditure budget and it's funded with, you know, they have more taxes to end with this money that's just.
So it's still a budget issue.
It's not extra money, it's not going to, we're not going to add it in at the end.
That's, that's, I understand what I'm saying.
Too, whether you like it or not.
That's the expenditure, but we do get, we do get revenue in for the, the things that he has, it's already accounted for.
Well, like I said, a recommendation to, you know, that, yeah, just for everyone to look at and for everyone to go look at their budgets. And I, I don't know, we're going to have our next budget discussion. Uh, I'm sure maybe we'll get to that toward the end of this meeting. So really, we just, we can't keep kicking the can down the road and, and not do anything. We've got to come up with some numbers and we, we've got to have, you know, we've got to kind of get our guts on the road before July gets here. We can't wait till June and July to start talking about it. And I think that's why we've been having these budget discussions, so we need to start moving on some numbers. If we cut this, what will it look like? And then how, what do we, what, what do we got to give you for, and where are we going to do, where are we getting more from? And I think, you know, the last thing we want to do is raise taxes, you know? But I think we have to look at when we can make some cuts before, that's not our first order of business is to raise taxes and then take it out of the reserve.
You did exactly what you were charged to do at our meeting last week. And that was, we were going to come back with some numbers that we felt like that, um, that we needed to do to balance this budget. And that's what you did and I, I commend you for coming back with these numbers. You can't keep kicking that bucket down the road. If you're waiting for everybody to say, well, this is how much I can cut off, we're not going to get there. We are not going to get there. And at the end of the day, the buck stops with us, okay? The public is only going to look at the five of us, okay? So keep that in mind. And I, I am not willing to raise airborne taxes or anything else. These special assessments until we have used these numbers that you're suggesting here.
So with that said, I think we have some direction, there's something to work off of.
Mr. Chairperson, do you want to discuss during the March workshop?
Yeah.
Give everyone enough time to.
March twenty-fifth, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bring back this month. March workshop. All right. There's nothing else there. We will, uh, move on when we get back to public request. Robert Dozier to appear before the board to request lifetime vote. We have Mr. Robert Dozier in the building. Anyone on the line? So. Okay, and the motion on second table, uh, the Robert Dozier, just before the board, about seven thousand. Um, and anyone that'll know this is in reference to the spring lawyer acquisition. So, uh, yeah, once you know second on the table, the table is silent on the favor. Wanda, maybe we reach out to Mr. Dozier.
We have a signed contract, but I'll reach out to him.
Uh, we'll go to, at nine A under, uh, general business. The board to discuss garbage and trash is amended by Commissioner Fancy.
I wonder, can you give us, uh, the status of the, um, roll-off situation in terms of the trucks and?
Yes, so, um, we were able to acquire a new, um, truck last week. Once the board approves the invoice tonight, we should be able to get a tag and have it, um, on the road tomorrow. We have, um, as of today, we had two operational roll-off trucks that would add a third and we're hoping to have one of them back out of the shop tomorrow. So that would be four trucks hopefully for the rest of the week running. We, we think it will take probably a week and a half to get caught up because we are receiving a lot of, of debris. Um, but, um, it would, having four operational trucks would make a big difference. We had three trucks running on Saturday and we're able to get quite a bit done, but they seem to be filling up as quickly as we're emptying them.
Do you, how many drivers do we have?
We have four drivers.
So we have plenty of drivers.
We do, and we have a part-time driver we're getting ready to hire on. Our biggest issue right now is we don't have a mechanic, but we received an application today. So, um, it will, we will process that application.
What is the salary we're offering that mechanic?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I, I, I don't remember what the starting salary is.
Bring that back to the board then. So, um, how did it just so happen that four trucks or three trucks, four trucks? How did it so happen that four trucks all went out at the same time, basically?
Bad luck, I would say.
Did that?
Yeah, it was just bad luck.
So we, we do regular.
We do, but a lot of these trucks have high mileage on them and honestly, you know, we, we were able to purchase a new truck last week, but we, we could really use another new truck and I'll bring that back to the board for discussion.
How long were the trucks out of commission?
Oh, it's been, I believe, at least two weeks where all of them were, where we just had one.
So when that, when that happens, even if it's one, one truck that goes out, um, who, uh, who, who repairs them? Is it local or do we have to send them off?
It depends on what's wrong with them. We do have, we utilize Schwab and then we also utilize Nextran depending on the issue that we're having. The truck that we have at Nextran, um, has not been repaired as of yet. The two trucks that were at Schwab, I think were there at least two weeks and we were able to pick them up either Thursday or Friday. But then, um, Saturday, we had an issue with one of them that was unrelated to the repair.
So, uh, so the two weeks that they've been in the repair shop, what has, what's been the holdup?
Uh, waiting, well, waiting in line for someone to work on them and waiting on parts. I think the parts have been the biggest issue.
Where did the parts have to come from?
I don't know. I don't know where they were.
So, so I would suggest that when, when this happens and that we don't need to wait on parts, okay? We can send somebody to pick them up. I don't care where you have to go, send somebody to get them. That's just good business to, uh, put somebody on the road and let them go get those parts because it's critical that our trucks are in operation. I will tell you, Wanda, if you look at these roll-offs and the shape they're in, let me tell you something, you're not getting beat up. Staff is not getting beat up.
Yes, ma'am.
The five of us are being slaughtered and I'm telling you, the things that people are saying about us is really, really hurtful, okay? They won't ever want of us to be replaced because we're not doing our jobs. And all, everything that can be said about us five is being said and I don't like that. I do not like that. Um, and as you can see, we take the blame, nobody else gets the blame. It's us, it's us five that gets the blame and that's why I'm trying to, LaWanda, if there's any way that I can offer any suggestions or any help, because it's going to come back on me and, and the rest of them and I don't like that. I try to do my job.
I understand and I.
I don't like to be criticized when it's something that if we need to go get a part, get on the road and let's go get it.
I don't think it's that simple, but I will double check on that. Well, because I don't know where, I don't even know where the parts are.
Y'all people will know where they're getting the parts from. And we, if we have to rent a truck and go get it, or I'll drive a truck and go get it. I don't care where it's at, just tell me where to go. And that's what, that's what big companies do. They don't wait two or three weeks for parts. They send somebody the next day, whether they have to go to Miami, Atlanta, wherever they go. They, they go and get those parts to get this job back, back up and running and that's what, that's what we've got to do. We've got to think outside the box.
Well, and, and we did, now we did utilize POPS as much as we could to help us. That's, we had two trucks on Saturday, um, to try to help us get back in line. And we had, I mean, either one or two days previous week, they did help us with trucks. But I'll, I'll double check on the parts.
And that's all well and good, but up until Saturday, two weeks ago, we should have had something going on that we could get these trucks back in, in service soon as we could. So.
I'll check if there's any opportunity. I'll check and see if there's an opportunity for us to, to pick up parts ourselves, I'll check.
Now, what about the truck that's still in the shop? What's the, what's, what's the status on it?
Uh, that is that Nextran, I believe that's a parts issue.
Are they telling you what's wrong? Uh, do they need a part?
I'll check. I mean.
Call me tomorrow, let me know. Because if they're waiting on a part, let's offer to go get it.
And now, Mr. Chairman, um, is the necessity there with the volumes for the contractor to continue on Saturdays? And is, is.
Hold the microphone, please.
Open to that. Well.
What did he say?
He said, is the necessity there to use the contractor on Saturday to get that available?
Available so here. And if also was open, that's my question.
So also is open, they're going to be open until April first, April thirtieth, if I'm right, they're going to be.
Some days are just.
So, uh, so on the contractor, he has, I had spoken with the administrator and understood that we had all the truck issues. I did recommend us maybe even reaching out, but it is out of the norm to have ninety percent of your fleet down, so to speak. Yeah, it is, that's, that's not a normal situation. So I did ask the administrator maybe to reach out to POPS to see if we could get some capacity in here to help move this idea and it costs us more money, but we still are charged, are citizens and, and obviously we were not going along. But, uh, so, uh, so, yeah, I mean, I, I would say that that is needed. We may not need it when we get our trucks running and get caught up. I mean, I think we can, we can help the administrators to.
Well, just understanding that we've, you know, had such an accumulation and then once you kind of have that compounded, you got to, you got to try to catch up and then keep up. And if we're having issues, that can kind of recur if, if we're not cautious. But one question I did have, I, I was asked by a resident at the also the site. Is there, or could we request, if there isn't, an area that we know is clean, which is not causing tires and other repairs that have to be made? And, and you may know about it, Mr. Chairman, I'm not familiar enough to be able to say it, but I wanted to be able to quantify to our residents that, you know, we are trying to take all the measures we can to not have self-inflicted repairs and such, whether it be tires or whatever else may come along with that. But I, I wanted to ask that question.
That, that was an issue in the last two weeks, um, flat tires and then also, um, one of the dais, the, the wiring and some of the other components were actually ripped out from the truck and that, that happened, I think about two weeks ago. I did reach out to the landfill, I haven't received a response to see if there's anything that, any way we can work together just to keep our, you know, keep our trucks on the road. I know last week, Monday, we ended up with four flat tires, um, after, after going to the roll-off, or excuse me, to the landfill. So I haven't heard back from John yet on that.
Yeah, sure, they, they had, were keeping this area clean. What they thought protect for some of these issues with these, uh, tires and then the one truck that tore some of the electrical components out from my truck. They're really going to need that. They're not taking this truck and trying to do that garbage like this. And not to mention drivers having to get out and walk in.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Compromised.
Yes.
So you did speak to him and he said that he would.
I'm sure that's, well, his thoughts, that's not really been an issue, but apparently it is an issue because we're, we got people talking about it, so.
Right.
You know, the, the, one of the problems is, is that some roll-off attendants are telling these people, they can't take it, take it down to the road and dump it off. And I had one person that told me this week, he told me to take it down there and that's what I did. So this, this just gets worse and worse and worse by the hour. And that's why I'm trying to help you to come up with some ways that we can move this along. Another thing that I thought about, you know, was just trying to think outside the box. Would there be any truck that we could borrow from a, another county? Probably not, but it doesn't hurt to ask. And then we can always rent a dump truck and excavator and let them go pick this stuff out of the, out of the bins. Um, and then we could always designate an area at the roll-off to let people just put their stuff inside the roll-off, even if it's on the ground, rather than to have them take it by the road, which they're doing. And it's just going to cost us more money and more money that we don't have the more they do this. We've got to stop the bleeding. We've got to stop the bleeding and so we can't let this go on. So if you can find out about this other truck.
I will.
And, um, give us an update on that if somebody needs to go get a part or whatever. But we need, we need our trucks operating and when this happens, I'd like to be notified so that when I have all these people calling me, I'm not sitting there saying, well, oh, I didn't know we had a truck out or whatever, you know? I want to be able to know so I can tell them, but.
I, I thought I, I apologize, I thought I updated.
Last week?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but when it happens, when it happens, I'd like to know.
Okay.
Um, I just don't like for, you know, people that I work for calling me and I don't know anything about what they're talking about. anything about what they're talking about. I think somebody had a question back there. Did you say this?
If you'll call Brian Lindon, who family owns the recycle center here in town, you can ask Brian if he can hit first round capacity and pull some loads for you over to Greenville. And if you want his number, I'll let you, if you, I'll leave a message. So, if you're having problems with nails and tires, we've got trucks now over. If you go to Northern Tool overnight, purchase a bar net magnet, as it's called, or a forklift magnet. They're about, let me think, Thomas, about a hundred and a quarter a piece. And with, if someone would drive through those lanes each day and pick up those nails that are intended to this tire and your tire.
That's happening at the landfill.
And you actually buy one on wheels and, I mean, it's one and they're cheap.
I believe.
If you wanna cut your cost in half on that, if you take it to a band saw and cut it in half, it goes twice as far.
So, four trucks are out, out of commission. Are the drivers doing pre-trips? That's another thing that could also help is, or do, is the county own these trucks?
Yeah.
So, who, are they doing pre-trips on the truck every day that they're running it to help utilize and help you guys understand these are the repairs that are needing for these trucks?
And if I could speak to that, I'm in a truck company in three different states and I will tell you that it's post-trip, it's back from March. So, if that tire's flat on the start of the next shift, you know, it just happened overnight. That's what the federal motor carrier, uh, standard is.
Do the trucks run seven days a week? Is the landfill open seven days a week or just Monday through Friday?
It's Monday through-
Saturday now.
Landfill is, is Monday through Saturday right now.
Right now.
No, I mean, this is under the governor's orders with the cleanup.
In eleven hours a day.
Especially the sun, the sundown.
Okay.
He didn't, he did not say that they were gonna expand those hours when it comes to the time and I would probably just about say no.
For three months.
I'll get that actually, I just heard him in a conversation.
So, again, we are expecting to have four trucks on the road tomorrow, one of them being the brand new truck that was just purchased. We're, um, hoping to have a tag and have it added to insurance because that has to be done before we put it on the road. Um, and then once we receive the truck back from NextTran, we'll have five and we will be in better shape with five.
Do you have drivers for all five of them?
We should when we have, if we hire the part-time driver, but if, even if not, it would be good to have a spare. So, so if one truck goes down, we'll have another truck ready to go. And I, I will bring back for consideration to the board, if, if you want to purchase another truck, um, we would have, we should have another one available around June.
Good.
So, hold on just a minute. So, um, you said you've got five drivers then?
We should have if we hired the part-time driver.
If you do what?
If, I believe we'll have five if, once a new hire is put on payroll, but I'll double check.
Can that department manage or drive a truck?
Uh, no, I don't believe either.
It doesn't have the CDL license?
No, I don't believe that.
That's not a requirement?
No, it is not.
Maybe it should be. Now, what about the trash on the right-of-way? I mean, this is out of control, especially now that people are being told to dump their household garbage there. So, do we have a plan yet of what, when and where, how is this gonna be taken care of? People are killing us over that.
So, as far as I know, all of the bag trash was already removed from the right-of-way and all of the tires were removed. So, that hopefully will leave what will be, um, what FDOT will pick up, but they're, they're not done. Um, as of now, they, as of the blast report, they had twenty-five trucks on the right-of-way cleanup and had removed seven hundred, a little over seven hundred and ten thousand cubic yards, but it's one point eight million estimated. So, they're, they're not complete. It's not complete yet. They have started the non-county maintained road, um, trash removal, debris removal and they've got somewhere between two and five trucks on that daily. It just depends, but typically a minimum of two.
And that's well and good, but who's gonna pick up what's left, all the household garbage and all of those things? Who's gonna do that and when?
Well, I would assume we would wait until FDOT is done since we've removed all the bag debris and then go back and clean up what's left or what's put out after the deadline.
So, just to understand, and I might not have heard you right, but FDOT has, has finished with some of them, right? So, are there any leftover, are there any that still have the stuff that they won't pick up?
There may be, but I, we have not finished going, we got a pile of them today and Hank is going through them now to see if there's any debris remaining and we'll go back, we'll either send code enforcement out or we'll pick it up.
So, and code enforcement's gonna do what?
Well, if they know who generated the debris, if it's land clearing or something like that and we know where it came from, they will be asked to remove it.
And then, and, and I, I kinda see that's being problematic, but it's, it's worth a try, but so why can't we move quickly on that and try to get this stuff cleaned up?
We can. I just don't, I mean, I, I just hate to pick something up if we don't know if DOT will pick it up or not.
Well, they've already said they're not gonna pick up non-storm related and it seems like to me there's a lot of non-storm related, right?
I'll go over the list with Hank again.
Okay.
I'll go over the list with Hank again.
Just on that topic, I mean, I think the best way to go at that, how many roads do we have that they consider complete?
Probably about twenty or twenty-five in this line.
So, I would say, and, and what's gonna come back, it looks just messy to just me, is even after DOT has picked up, you know, uh, we've got household trash out, all of the, there's still gonna be a lot of just the people where the people ride down and it looks like folks has ridden down the road and just thrown without the wind of the truck, but in actuality it's probably things that's blown off the trailer and maybe moved on out of these trucks that's picking this debris up. So, I would say the, we probably should be looking at these roads that they consider complete and the crew that was inmate crew or whatever starts sending these guys. Cause the quicker we get it up out of the road and the road looks clean, then the quicker we look to be back to normal.
Well, remember that any of the roads that the contract mowing crew is, is going to mow, we will be asking them to start on the trash removal. So, as those roads are clear, our public works director is going to communicate that to, to the company and ask them to go ahead and start on the trash, the removal on those roads.
Is that part of their contract this weekend?
No, no, we are, we'll pay them. So, we have a cost from them to complete just the trash removal on those roads, which is about the same as we would pay for a mowing cycle. It's in the budget. They missed a mowing cycle this year anyway. So, what we'd like them to do is to clean up the roads where they're comfortable that it's not going to, you know, mess up their equipment or it's not gonna sling something, you know, out and hit somebody's windshield or damage their car. We'll get started on those as those, as those roads are cleared, we'll send those, is the plan that Hank and I talked about.
So, are we gonna wait until it's time to start mowing or are we gonna go ahead and start cleaning the roads now?
No, we would ask them to go ahead and start cleaning the roads now in preparation for-
They force them to quit.
I know, I know. That's why we need to-
I live in progress in the yard and that's pretty, this, I mean, I don't know how much I-
But I don't want them to, to mow until they're comfortable with that those roads are clean.
And see, the longer that it stays there, it encourages people to keep throwing stuff out, you know, whatever, whatever it is. But I'll tell you one thing that we, we need to think about and I hope we never, ever, ever have another storm like we had, but I think if we, if we face this situation again that we try to work with FDOT that, that they, and they have some, that, that the contractors have somebody with them and when they use those, I guess those excavators and put it on the truck, that they've got a crew right there with them that rakes and gets all that stuff up. Otherwise, it's on us to have to do it, so.
They've got a crew raking now.
They do.
They have a crew raking now. They got, they got a skid steer with a rake on it and that on Bucket Road there above by the airport, they come back with all that house debris was and they raked every bit of it. Not with a hand rake, with an excavator with a-
With a skid steer.
It was a, it was a skid steer. They had it on the McCree Road this, uh, this weekend, but even at that, that machine's still not gonna get it off.
It won't get it off.
It's a fine tuning.
It's just, you gotta have somebody doing what this crew you guys talking about is coming through and picking this thing and cleaning up these roadways.
Well, we've got those prisons, those three, and not prisons, but three labels we got.
We do. So, that, that was what I was gonna try to say next. If on the roads that the, the contract mowing crew doesn't clean up, we'll have, we'll have our storm removal crew out cleaning up those roads, so.
What are those people doing now?
Uh, they, well, they've been doing, they've been, um, like trimming lamps, any, anything like that's been sticking on on the right-of-way, they've been working on that. Anything that, um, the, the contractor didn't get, they've been going behind them and cleaning up.
Are they picking it up? Well, are they in it there?
I think they're picking it up, but on-
They gotta pick it up cause that's just, we're cutting it because of the mowing crew can't get through. And it's still, I think they are, I'm sorry, I think they are picking it up.
Do we know, or do we have an update in respect to concrete?
That will probably be that, so construction debris is the last thing that they're going to pick up. And every time I ask about concrete, they tell me they will get it, but it will be at the end of the, of the operations.
Areas where it has built up to a large amount have been notified about a couple of those. My presumption is that DOT's aware and they will typically be able to be stained to that degree.
That's my understanding.
Doesn't seem to be a removal of location. I'm assuming it's because they have part of the process moving forward in that, but I wanted to try to add.
I know they did stage some concrete down on the south end of the county and are, the last I heard, they would go back and pick that up. But construction debris is the last, is the last thing they'll pick up and they're still picking up vegetative debris and-
Have we gotten a percentage of completion, my chair?
No, I asked today if they had an end date in mind, but like I said, you know, they've picked up over seven hundred thousand cubic yards and the estimated was one point eight million, so they're, they still have-
What?
If, if the estimated is accurate, I don't know if it is or not.
One, one more question, um, and I don't know how many calls I've had about this house that was tore down on Johnson's Riplin Road. Who is gonna pick up that whole house?
My understanding is that DOT will pick it up.
They will?
Yes. We have several houses, um, that are in the right-of-way that they need to pick up.
Even if it's mixed?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that's an issue. I'll check again.
Okay, thank you.
But that, again, that's construction debris, so that would be one of the last things that we'd pick up.
Yeah, I, I thought that if it was mixed, that they wouldn't pick up anything that was mixed.
So, it's mixed with, with what?
It's just better material, it's, it's con, it's really probably concrete, a bit of material as far as wood materials. It's, it's not mixed with household trash.
It's, it's still construction debris. I mean, I understand what you're saying that it's not separated, but I don't think, I'll, I'll check on that again. I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll move on to county staff, I'd be the board to consider approval of proposed ship HHRP hurricane ID recipients and the invitation to bid for the demolition and construction of eleven new homes agenda by Melody Cox.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Melody.
We've got eleven houses that are currently qualified. We will, um, they are Sheila and David Haber, Patricia Brown, Betty Sue Ellison, Kathy Miller, Christina and Robert Huber, Karen Philp, Diana Lee, Karen Everett, Linda Kirin, Charlie and Amelia Gray, and Johnny and Brenda Leggett. Ten of the houses have already been determined as demo and, um, new construction and I will need the board to make a decision tonight on Karen Everett. Her house is kind of at the fifty-fifty mark. The issue is it would cost over seventy thousand dollars to re-habit, but it has a set value of sixty-three thousand dollars. So, it is up to the board to determine if you want to rehab it or go on and do a demo and reconstruction on it. And, um, you know, the, the rehab would be such an exorbitant amount to do. So, I do need you to make a decision on that one and we also need the board to, um, identify if they are related to anyone on this list.
That's number eight. I'm not related.
In relation, what, relation to the entire list, um, Jamie, I'm not related to any.
Not related.
Commissioner Figel not related, Commissioner Denton not related, Commissioner Newman not related.
Not related.
Commissioner Layden, huh?
Wait, cause now like the kinds of-
So, uh, so the question that I hear was Karen Everett.
Oh, Karen Everett, how, how you would like the board with this. Morally, um, is it fifty-one percent or more just repair? We of course did demolition and reconstruction, but hers was right at the fifty-fifty mark. But when you take into account, um, how much it would cost to repair it, it would cost more to repair it than the value of, of the home. So, it's your decision on how, um, you would like the board to move forward.
Mr. Trooper.
Melody, I'm sorry, I thought of something after we spoke earlier. If that's changed to a demo replacement, we have, we have the funding to do that without affecting the seventeen that we know will be qualified, right?
That's correct. We have sufficient funding to, to, to do a demo and keep in mind, we were very concerned, um, on, on this particular house that there would be considerable change orders along the way too. So, I, I personally think it is in our best interest to do a demo and new construction because we are investing in these homeowners and, um, you know, that way we would know exactly where we're at on this homeowner or two, due to having so much, um, so many questions on, on how this will turn out. I, I, I do think it's, um, and I discussed this with Miss LaWanda earlier, that I think it's in the county's best interest, um, to look at us and investment and, and we're going to have to demo.
And, and also the homeowner has agreed to the demo.
And that's why I'm with you. Right. I said demo.
All right, so someone, can we obtain a motion to approve this list and along with Karen Everett in a demo replacement?
Motion to approve?
I second it.
Motion, my Commissioner Figel, and second, my Commissioner Denton, on a favor. Thank you, Melody.
Thank you so much and hope, and hopefully we're back, um, in the very near future with the other six that are part of that seventeen that we would like to move forward with.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if now is the time or, or if we wanna wait, but we have a couple of ladies here that have, uh, one of them had called me today and she had some complaints about, had some, uh, issues with this company, et cetera. And so she's here and would it be now the right time for her to talk since we're talking about these or do you want us to wait until this, uh, non-agenda items?
Sure, is, uh, yeah, I mean, she can come up and talk now. Is it one of the ones on the list that was just approved?
No, and, and when she called me today, um, she was telling me, you know, the same old, same old that we've discussed for several meetings and, um-
No.
They keep asking her for more things, and she also, and she'll tell you that, um, they have told her, they just emailed her again last Friday for some more stuff, and they're telling her that, um, the twenty-five thousand dollar, um, SBA loan that she got would have to be deducted from her new home. And I, I just didn't think that was right, but anyway, it's Tabitha Gilliard, if you wanna come, can she come forward, Mr. Chair? Tell them what you told me today.
Yes, um, I did my application, like I said, over a year ago, we have to keep calling them, calling them, calling them, calling them. And I finally got a hold to some guy named Cameron. And then he told me he was gonna look into it, then he came back and then he started the process. And then now that Ms. Riddles back, they, accordingly, working on, and told us, gave us the resident verification form and had us to sign it. So I thought we was in phase two. Now they keep telling us, like, today, I got an email, they want me to prove what I deal with twenty-five thousand that I got from a SBA loan. They first called me and told me I had a business. I had to prove where I had business. I said, I don't have a business, ma'am, I gave you all my tax returns, I gave you everything that you asked. And that's the thing, they asked us to get this stuff from the application. Now they require all this extra stuff to change all type of stuff to meet their criteria. And I'm confused because the application and act followed it. But I am doing everything they ask.
Do we know she's one of the seven?
Seventeen.
Any others, do we know, Ms. Gilliard is one of the seven?
She just told me I'm in phase two, and she just keep asking me for stuff, asking me for stuff.
Yeah, that's good.
Even, uh, her right here, we gotta correspond with each other.
Yeah, but I got, I like, say, I got a phone call today and they asked me on my warranty, my house is in, um, my maiden name, which is Bishop. Um, I got married in two thousand eight, uh, six, my husband died in two thousand, um, eight. So they asked me to provide my marriage license, I did that. They asked me to provide the death certificate, which I felt like that was very personal, I had to provide that. They called me today and asked me to go to the clerk to get a quick deed sale to myself to change my name from Bishop to Smith. Because they want all of, they say it was mandated that I had everything to match, my driver license, my social security card, and all that, and all that still says I'm Bishop Smith. And I told them my name is the only name in the universe with this name. But now they asking me to do a quick deed sale to myself, just to change my last name to Smith to support the other documents when I had to provide my birth certificate and all that. But they want me to do that, that's what they sent me today. My person has sent me something in writing where the state is requiring me to do a quick deed sale to myself, there's likely I may have to pay a fee that no one is providing me assistance with. They haven't responded back to me yet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
You see, I'm saying, that's a word, if they told her that today, that would be my next step, because my thing, everything was Tabitha Gilliard, now I'm Tabitha Ross, which like I say, they're gonna make me, I didn't change my name or nothing, I just left the Gilliard, so I'm gonna have to go through that change command, changing everything.
I don't know that we'll have your answer.
No, I'll, I'll send an email, but you're listed as Tabitha Gilliard Ross.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the way you're listed in, in the table.
Mm-hmm.
Ma'am, can you tell me your name?
Sedetra Smith. S A D A Y T R I L, last name Smith.
And I will say, I know they came to this board meeting, and they, they did allude to new rules that do come to them, you know, maybe even monthly from, I guess it would be the FEMA or the shipper. Actually, I think it was actually these rules down from the banking, uh, group.
No, we are following up with everything they say, it's just a thing that they wanted us to keep, like, I feel like I told them they was working backwards. Because you shouldn't never ask me to sign to have a resident verification form done if you keep asking for all these documents.
So if you will, maybe if Luanda, she's got, root up over, then maybe she could help follow up on these two.
'Cause I got a call, I could've got one, I was, I was alone, but I don't wanna be in debt.
I had these papers to come out.
I could've got one, and they didn't even ask for half of this debt.
I have to see any loans out.
And this was through the SBA. And he even said if I put the property up, but that is not what I wanted to do. The guy that I set up, I'm about to go that route, if that's the case, 'cause what they doing is just too much.
And now, why did they, uh, told her that, that the twenty-five thousand, uh, loan that she took out, a loan, that she's gonna pay back, why are they saying that they will deduct that from the cost of her home? I, I...
Yeah, she told me, she gave me example, uh, 'cause when she sent me that email, I was actually driving when I checked the email, and I stopped, sat around and told her, could you call me soon as possible? Like, if your earth is convenient. She said, well, the reason why I'm asking this is because, I say, ma'am, listen, my stuff is all of the thoughts, all put up. I didn't say stuff because I didn't know I had to prove, I just had, it gotta come out and do the repairs and it gotta come remove trees. I didn't know that I was gonna have to prove to you what happened with the twenty-five thousand dollars, but you're welcome to come to the house and see what has been done. And she told me they'll send the inspector out, and if the inspector come out and don't see the twenty-five thousand that's in the house, then that'll be, if, um, I'm awarded fifty, then they'll deduct whatever.
And they gotta pay the twenty-five thousand dollar loan then. Right, that's what I...
And that's what I told her, I say, it just be exact with you. I had a whole year, so April will be the first year I gotta pay the first payment. I said, I'm gonna pay that this month, so... I don't get it, why, then if that's part of it, I understand, and I told her, at this point, if you do twenty-five, that'd be fine. When are y'all gonna get started? It's over a year ago.
That's good.
I, I'll follow up.
'Cause I told her, if you do twenty-five, whatever you do, I'm gonna have to complete the rest. 'Cause you see twenty-five being too much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, hold on, the county administrator out of Adam Kim, the board to consider approval of resolution authorizing the chairperson's sign agreement F-0152 with the Florida Division of Emergency Management intended by Melody Pemberton.
The chair, just before you go. So David, that's, so David, you, you have a statement?
Well, she, she did.
You disagree with her?
No, I have a statement, I had issues with him too. Yeah, but even like, um, I got five thousand for FEMA and I provided them that, but they making me do the same thing, which I provided them documents. Um, they already sent the inspector out to check the house maybe a couple of months ago. But, um, he told me today it wouldn't change anything, but I'm just not clear as to...
They working backwards.
That I'm changing my name, and the Bishop is my name, but they want me to do a quick deal, uh, quick deed sale to myself, just to change my last name to Smith. Yeah.
All right, so, Adam Kim?
Actually, my cover page was wrong and I apologize. I, I just need the board to adopt this resolution authorizing the chairperson's signature on the state funded grant agreement number F-0152. So the board already executed this agreement, um, FDM came to us after the fact and asked for a resolution.
Yeah, to, uh, obtain a motion to read the resolution by title.
I move.
I'll give it a second, in favor?
Aye.
Resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida, authorizing the chairperson to sign the state funded agreement number F-0152 with the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management.
I want you to approve.
I want my question, favor to approve the resolution, in a second.
Favor.
Thank you, my question, ready, in favor?
Aye.
And we've already approved the agreement, is that what we said?
Yeah.
But, we're going to, out of eleven, the board to continue discussion regarding the potential sale of a portion of Hampton Springs Park intended by the county administrator. Now, I will leave this, because I did bring this to the, I mean, you may have put it under administrator, I will leave this. So we, I did, I brought this back some time ago, in, uh, the potential sale of, you know, we had a existing business that was looking to expand their business and, uh, was interested in, uh, obtaining a portion, you know, six to eight acre, six to eight acres of this site. Again, this is not anything to do with the, uh, this is not, and it's on the screen here, uh, the, the, the portion that we're, that we're referring to. It's directly behind the, the, uh, existing RV park there. And it's nothing to do with the actual Hampton Springs historical site, so to speak, where the rest room, and even the, it, it doesn't go to the river, doesn't go back to the spring. It's just a, a wooded area that, uh, the, the, uh, business owner has interest in obtaining to expand their business. Uh, now, he is aware, they are aware, that this would have to go out to bid, so it's not just a, a, a grab, you know, take it and grab it so that it will go out to bid, so I think tonight, we don't, we haven't necessarily, this board hasn't really approved the intent to sell a portion. So I think what we have laid out there is about eight acres.
How many?
That's about eight acres there.
And, and the blue part, and with the green?
No, 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 that's in, in the red, and, and just the woods, I mean, and any of you, I don't know if any of you's been to Hampton Springs, have been around any of that, walked that. It's a big piece of woods that no one ever steps foot on. So, uh, we have not approved the intent to sell, I think in order, we would have to approve the intent to sell. And then, and then we would have to probably order an appraisal.
I'd...
Survey, an appraisal?
Survey and appraisal, and I would need, um, the funds to do that, which would be at least fif, well, approximately fifty-five hundred dollars.
You would have to spend that until the sale took place?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Uh, what was that, I'm sorry?
I said, you would not have to expend that money until the sale actually came, you know, to fruit.
Well, no, I apologize, so I, I would think that if the board is, and Conrad, help me if I'm wrong, but if the board intends to sell that parcel, we would need to do a survey and an appraisal, so we can identify what portion they would be interested in selling and the actual value.
Well, how are you gonna ascertain market value?
So that would be what would the appraisal would do for us.
Be good for the occasion, because if the co-adjacent property owner was there, you know, and the higher value would be paid by somebody that, you know, I'm, I'm here, you never be able to ascertain true market.
Are you, you mean after the property was developed?
I'll pay you, I'll pay you more since that's close to me, I'm not gonna tell you that, but I mean, that's typical, usual, usual customer.
So what I would anticipate is that, um, if the board, if the board wishes to move forward, then once we obtain a survey and a, and an appraisal, then at that point, we would, um, advertise for bids and then go from there, correct, Conrad?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like we do at any other, just like we do at all times.
Right.
This is a potential.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I, if I remember correctly, when this first came up, I don't think it was eight acres, I thought that it was just four acres, but I, without going back and looking at the minutes, I'm not quite sure of that, but even though this is not, um, where the hotel was and, and all of that, it's still valuable historic property. Um, the whole, that, all that area is, is still historic property. And it belongs to the people of Taylor County. It doesn't belong to us five to make this decision. This property belongs to the people of Taylor County. And I don't think that this board has any right to sell property, especially historic property. Uh, now, um, I know that, uh, Mr. Mattingly wants to put a, a, a camper trailer park in, and, um, you know, um, and he's, and, and it's been, it's been talked about how many new jobs this was gonna create. Well, has he, has he told anybody how many new jobs this is gonna create? Because I can't imagine that a little camper park would, would, um, provide very many jobs, and I'm sure there are not high-paying jobs at, at that. And then, um, it was mentioned that, well, it would bring in adware and taxes. We don't know how much that is, because we don't know the value of the property, but I would certainly think that if, if, if y'all go ahead and, uh, your intent is to sell this public property that belongs to the citizens, that you would have to find somebody that is versed in the value of historical property, not just uh, some property out in the woods somewhere, this is for, I think it would have a much higher of, of value than just any...
Don't forget the bed taxes too.
Say it again?
Don't forget the bed taxes too, what you're talking about.
Yeah, well, you know, that, that's, for what this property has worked to Taylor County and the citizens of Taylor County and future uses of, of this property, we don't know if, if these people that are working for us trying to bring an industry in here, if they're gonna find somebody that that piece of property down there might be just what they need. And if we sell it for a little camper park, then, uh, we've lost the opportunity for a developer if somebody like that came along, and that's quite possible. So I, I, I just don't think that, I mean, this is selling this property. Um, we need to hang on to it, there's not that much that have come to us in terms of new jobs or I can't believe the adware would make that much difference to us, if we need that, let's make, let's continue with what we're starting, let's, let's do cutbacks to increase, not to sell valuable historic property.
Commissioner, I would respond, and then what you said, Mr. Page, is, I mean, I don't have a problem. There's thirty-eight acres there, and I don't have a problem, I have it mentioned at prior discussions in reference to Hampton Springs. But let's go down the path of putting you down there, we still got thirty good acres, but we still, thirty good, thirty-two good acres there to put aside, put, to put a museum that talks about this Hampton Springs, that really a lot of people may pull in there and don't know nothing about it. You see a wood there, you see some trails?
Mr. Commissioner, uh, I totally agree with you.
George, come, come to the...
I'm sorry, sort of soft spoken anyway. I, I totally agree with you, it'd be a great place for a museum and all, because you realize that that's probably within feet of where, you know, and as Soto came through. You know, when he came through back in, back in the olden days.
Step up to the mat, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm not, I don't speak real loud, I don't have a lot of lung volume since I, I had cancer two years ago. So I don't have full use of my right lung, so my apologies if I spoke slowly. It's of interest to me, you know, nobody in my family, I'm sure, ever stayed at Hampton Inn or the Hampton Hotel there. They may have, um, you know, sold some of it or something like that, but it's always been interesting to me, since I was a young kid in Jefferson County, and a guy named Lester Page and some other folks did some stuff there for students. So the students were allowed to come, so we've all bust in, so I found it extremely interesting to, uh, see the site, see how the things were laid out. But, you know, a lot of the programs and stuff like that, either not funded or don't exist, um, anymore. But it was really great to see that, because it, it really nipped, and yet that water does smell like, you know, old sulfur springs typically do. But that's my, that's my interest, my two cents, where I've always been, it's fascinating. And it was here for a long time.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's, that's...
And I will, you know, even in your discussion, Commissioner, now, mentioned that with our TCDA, that you mentioned that we shouldn't be selling our citizens' property, but in your same discussion, you mentioned that, well, maybe there's another use that our TCDA can find for it, so it's either, I, I don't wanna bring this back up, so I hate for this to sound like a personal vendetta, to not allow this property to, to, this potential business to potentially expand their business over, hey, we don't, we don't want this person to get it, but hey, we're okay if down the road someone else comes along. it, but hey, we're okay if down the road someone else comes along. Now, we've talked about this before, and I'm just, I don't know what it is, but I just know how it sounds when it's presented to me that way.
Okay, let me just say this. I would hope that the TCDA would bring in something other than a little campground. I was hoping that, and I'm thinking that, that, and I know they're not looking for a campground, but they're looking for an industry that would, uh, that would put a lot of people to work and bring in a lot of taxes. People would move here and buy homes, and so, um, I don't think that a camper park is the best use. First of all, I don't want to sell it because it's historic, but if you do, I sure don't think that a little camper park is the best use for that property. We need to hold out in case the TCDA does bring something that will be of value to this whole community, not just to one person.
We got a good piece of property across the highway, a big piece of property that would be fine for a business. About straight across the highway from that, that ain't nothing but a scrub out here next to that river right there.
And they could put this camper park across the road too.
Yeah.
And leave our historical property alone for a better use.
Is the property going to be of historical value or industry? You know, one another.
But we, we keep saying, maybe the TCDA is going to bring an industry to go on the site, but wouldn't the industry actually also destroy the historical consideration?
Right.
So, my, my, um, I guess view here is, if, if we can come to a point and, and this business owner can expand his business, that is economic development, and that is also helping in assisting in the bed tax or bringing tourism here. This could help for the potential, I believe our current board is very familiar with what we said in respect to the, the um trail system that we wanted to have in place out there. This would make um an opportunity for that and a consideration to have that amenity um at this point when we're fortunate enough to have those trails in that place. So, if we're talking eight acres and you're going to retain thirty, isn't that what I'm understanding here? The potential is to have an eight-acre parcel um that could be bid upon for that potential use?
If it's historical, why is it being sold anyway? That's what's wrong with the United States. They want to sell off the historical stuff and, and turn it into something that our children don't even have a clue as to what we had at one time or what was there for them to enjoy. If the money's big enough, all the stuff leaves, and all we have is that kind of stuff that comes in. We need businesses in around here. The beach needs a store. We need a Dollar General. We need a, a Dollar Tree. We need a Family Dollar. Why does the city have four and we can't get one down there where there's nothing else?
Amen, sister.
At the beach, you don't mind?
Yeah.
You fixing to have a Dollar General down there?
Well, I would hope so. It's about time.
We've been hearing that for three years now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, if I, I just, I think, I think sometimes our priorities are wrong as to, we might get more people to come and visit Hampton Springs if it was set up as a historical museum than if it's a trailer park, because we got enough trailer trash in Taylor County now that we don't need more trailer parks to bring that kind of stuff in. But if you're going to build Hampton Springs Museum, people will come and see that.
Well, I think you had to potentially do both. They had a thirty-acre parcel and an eight-acre parcel. Why couldn't you do both?
Well, areas that.
Have restrictions.
They're not putting there where the spring is. This is a scrub between Rockies and the edges of Parkdale.
Right. But if there's trees left, I wouldn't tear down a tree anyway. Ideally, Helene did enough tree damage for us to tear trees down or cut trees out, cut natural wasteland and stuff for a camper trailer.
So, if it is a historical site, as everyone is saying, when you buy a historical home, there's restrictions. You can't do anything to that house without going to a board or to the Historical Society and say, hey, I would like to change my flooring in this floor, because that's what it is when you buy historical property. So, you as a board and whoever else can come up with guidelines of what can be done. If you sell it to this gentleman, you could say, hey, you know, you can put your RVs here, but this is your restrictions. You have to, if you have to think historical, and I see where you need to bring in some money, but this here is a way to have a little bit of both.
Yeah. Why don't we put it before the voters next year? If, and see if the citizens of Taylor County want to sell this property, and let, let them decide instead of four people here deciding.
We've sold Taylor County property right down there at the beach.
Say again?
We have already sold Taylor County.
We did, and I wasn't for that either.
I know, but we got some revenue out of it. We getting tax money out of, we getting tax money out of it now. We weren't getting anything out of it. We were, we were having to spend money to keep it clean.
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not enough to make me want to sell county property, especially historical property.
And you mentioned economic development. Uh, that little piggly bunch, a little bit of stuff down there would not be considered economic development, in my opinion.
Well, I'll say this. I am glad that this initiative to sell a portion of this to allow a land, uh, an existing business to expand their business, I'm glad to see that's finally brought some attention to the Hampton Springs Park. Well, I think prior to this initiative, half the people that talked about this have not even driven in there and seen what that place looks like, and we had a tenant there. We had to hire a tenant there just to keep the place from being trashed up.
I'm not opposed.
And the park is still going to be there as it is, so the same, I mean, the, the Hampton Springs Park is going to be there as it is, but I'm going to say it again, that yes, we do need new business, and yes, we do need to allow our existing businesses to expand if we see a, see an area where they can't expand without damaging the historical park that's been in place for years. The park will be there, and I, I must say it again, I mean, let's go down the path to put a museum on the remaining property. Plenty of room there, put a museum there, and, and, and put, put, put some things there that, that, that talks about this park, talks about what Mr. Page brought up here, that, that, but put a building there that gives people to go in and they can see what this park is, the history of this park and what it's all about, because today somebody drives up and looked at it, they say, wouldn't there be a trail, walk back to a water hole, and that's it. The tree, the, the area that we're talking about, well, nobody stepped foot in it the way it looks today. But just allowing an existing business to expand their business, I don't have any problem with that.
Mr. Chair, the next thing you know, he'll be back up here, he'll want to buy the rest of it, because he approached me several years ago. He wanted to buy the whole thing.
I bet you the whole thing.
So, this, so it was decided that that time that couldn't help, that, that, that we couldn't do that. So, my guess is he'll be back until he gets old of it.
We need him.
And this has been said at one of the other meetings that, that they thought it was personal. This is not personal. This is, this is not personal, and I haven't taken five hundred dollars each, each election sample from Mr. Matley, although he tried to give me money for my campaign, I never took a dime from him, so that doesn't, that doesn't fly with me.
Neither.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and get?
I know some he did.
Do you get the, do you need a motion to go ahead and get a appraisal done and a survey done on that eight acres?
We need a motion with the intent.
Dirty money.
To say.
Y'all want to hear the law?
Sure.
Okay. The Board of, this is one twenty-five point thirty-five Florida statute. Board of County Commissioners is expressly authorized to sell and convey any real or personal property and to lease real property belonging to the county whenever the board determines in the best interest of the county to do so, to the highest and best bidder for the particular use the board seems to be the highest and best for such length of term. That's if you leased it, of course, if you sell it. Now, so the board has the right to, in fact, sell property, and we've done it before. It's one thirty-five, one twenty-five thirty-five. Now, you go further and says, when the Board of County Commissioners finds that a parcel of real property is of insufficient size and shape to be issued a building permit for any type of development, you can sell it as it has a value of less than fifteen thousand dollars at a private sale. Remember, we did that before when we found out a little piece of property that, that wasn't worth uh fifteen thousand dollars. So, in this particular case, um, the board does have the right to, um, to sell property. That's the law, you know, as, as practical matter, and it's up to the Board of County Commissioners to, to determine whether it's in uh the county's best interest to sell. I just want y'all to know the law on that. And of course, with the, with regard with historical property, historical property, if you're going to try to get it on a national registry of historical places, then there's certain things that you have to do. Uh, the reason I know about that is because I have a historical place that uh we put on the national registry, and you, at that particular time, there was no grants on that, and you could get what's called a tax credit when you improved it, but that, this, this, this is property that's not improved, okay? So, that's where that's at.
Yeah.
That's, I don't have any opinion, I'm just giving you the law.
But it doesn't hurt to ask the public what they would like to do if they're right, Conrad?
If, in fact, you wanted to put it on a, a straw vote, uh, that would be something to, um, we've done straw votes before. You understand what I mean by straw vote?
No, like a poll, public poll, I think.
You advertise it, you put it on the ballot. But anyway.
So, tonight, we would just need a, a motion on the intent to sell the portion, the area that's laid out, and then, I don't know if we would need a second motion or all in one motion, it would be to gain a survey and an appraisal of the property.
You have to, you have, the motion have to, also have to say that you determined it's the best interest of the county to do that too.
But this.
pursuant to what I just read y'all.
This is selling anybody, you would have to.
Yeah, it'd be, you'd have to bid it up.
Don't have to be a joke.
So, um, can't you, in a real estate transaction, require the buyer to pay all costs, like the survey and any other cost associated with that, with that?
Put that in the, in the advertisement.
Yeah, well, if y'all going to sell it or put it out there, I think that you, that you probably should get the buyer to pay all costs.
But see, there is no buyer yet.
Any potential buyer?
There is no, there is no buyer yet. You know, there's an advertisement that has to say, and you can put in the advertisement, the highest and best bidder would have to pay uh the, um, the survey and the appraisal. It could be all in part of the, of the purchase. And you can set a minimum, you can set a minimum that you want once it's been appraised, and you can also put in it that you agree to, that you can reject any and all bids. You know, that's, that's how you do that.
So, has the, has the, actually been, is it only registered as a historical site? Or is that just, because if you've been here long enough, you know it's historical site? Is it actually registered as a historical site? If not, I think it should be done.
Well, we have the, um, all the loans that came in to fix it up, what, wasn't that because it was historical?
I will have to, I will have to double check. I know that one of the grants was through the Bureau of Historic Preservation.
Can you get Melanie on the phone and let's find out now?
Where we use, where we use the money of the grants was in that park paving the road and cleaning out that there at the spring at about.
Hello? They built the bathrooms and all of that.
Yeah, built the bathrooms. That's one part of this.
So, Melanie, the question is, um, when, when we got all the grant money to rehab Hampton Springs, and I think, you know, it was used to build the bathrooms and all kinds of stuff down there, was that, um, was that grant uh got under the, um, guidelines or whatever that it was, that it was a historical site?
Yes, we received the grant under the intention that it was a historical site, and we were required to get a state master site file number on it, which it does have. We received three or four historic preservation grants on that, and then we received a transportation, what is now known as transportation alternative, with transportation enhancement, and we received that for deferred as a historic trailhead site.
Do you, this is Conrad, if I may, uh, do you recall if there are any restrictions on the alienation of that property?
I believe Ms. Wawanda checked on that, and they told her that there was not. However, we were waiting for a response from FDOT, as far as I know, on what the restrictions were as far as the grant funding. I know the Bureau of Historic Preservation told her there was none, but I'm not sure on FDOT transportation enhancement funds, that that is federal funding.
And that, that, those, those questions were asked a good while back, were they not, you know, and you were instructed to find out?
And I updated the board that it was approximately seven hundred thousand dollars if there was a sale of the trailhead portion, which this is well away from. So, this is, so the park portion, if that was sold, then we would have to use the proceeds up to and including seven hundred thousand dollars, the amount of the grants, on transportation type projects. So, but this isn't, this isn't that area where those improvements were made. Now, when I reached out to Bureau of Historic Preservation, I believe is the name of the agency, there were no longer any restrictions on, on that property because it had been over ten years.
Yeah, sometimes there are, what they sunset, those, those kinds of things.
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you, on my building, which is the old jail, it was twenty years, for twenty years, if you came and wanted to um go through the building and look where we hung folks, then I had to give you a tour. I'll give you a tour anyway, you know, because it's kind of fun, it's kind of interesting, uh, the, the history of that building, but uh, and we did get the, uh, like I said, it's twenty years on that particular building, y'all, so.
And, and, and do keep in mind the entire site has a master site file number on it, so whoever purchased it will need to keep that in mind on any development that they, that they do, because I'm still sure that it would require approval, this is the whole, the, the master site file is for an entire site.
So, whoever, whoever bids on it, they better do their bidding before they, before they bid, right? That's what that sounds like to me.
That's, that's correct. Like, if they go to do any development on it, they would have to get, um, you know, approval from the Department of State.
Good luck.
So, Conrad, I like, you know, your suggestion that, um, that, that there probably needs to be a minimum bid. We don't want to put it out there for the highest bid, because somebody could walk off with it for twenty-five thousand dollars.
You want to put in it there that you.
Retain the right.
Have the right to, to reject any and all bids.
Yeah, but I think that.
If you want to put a minimum on it, you can.
I think until you get a, an appraisal.
You don't know what to put as a minimum.
You don't know what to put, put that minimum out as.
I don't, I don't think we're ready to put a minimum until we do get a appraisal. I feel like we're just, at this point, we're looking to approve the intent of the sale and authorizing a survey and appraisal, and in the same agreement that we're, the buyer will pay for the, all, all the cost involved, as well as we do have the right to get any bids.
You know, there's another alternative, though, Mr. Chair. There's something called a stalking horse auction. There're two rounds of bidding. First round, if you win, your bid is the, you know, you have the right to submit the winning bid in the, in the second round. What it does is they're for racehorses, you know, country folks like us have never heard such a thing. But in the second round, if you won the first round, you can. But in the second round, if you won the first round, you can, you know, the books are open to you on the other bids. So you can exceed their bid. I never heard of it before in my life, and I went, tore out a plant over in Lake City for the company I was working for at the time before I retired. And that's how that property was sold by the court of party receiver. And I thought, wow. And, but I had to go look it up in a book, because it was a puzzled by it. But interesting way, and something you might, guys might want to consider.
My suggestion is you follow the statute.
Mr. Chairperson, if I may, I think what I need confirmation of is the size of the parcel. If this is, if this is the parcel that you want surveyed. And to answer Commissioner Feagle's question, I have the minutes with me, and the original discussion was four to five acres.
How much?
Four to five.
Yes, I didn't think it was eight.
But just because I have the minutes in front of me. So if the board will confirm if this is, if this is what you wish surveyed and appraised, the intent to sell, and then I will, I'll need to do a budget transfer for the fifty five hundred dollars, I think is around what we think we'll need to do the survey and the appraisal, and that will need to come from reserves.
So I mean, I'm, I'm good to put it at six acres.
Six or eight?
Six.
Six?
And I think we'll just have a motion with the intent.
I make that motion with all the strings attached for the whole thing, is what we've all talked about.
We have a motion back to Mr. Moody. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Newman. All in favor?
I'm not.
All right, we'll get item twelve, the county administrator, to discuss informational items. All right, we got comments and concerns from the public for the non-agenda items, for non-agenda items.
You said there's a dollar store coming down toward the beach. When is that? Do we have a deadline? Do we have any idea? And where's it gonna be?
Ma'am?
The dollar store down?
I'm not exactly sure. It's gonna be somewhere along there around Keaton, between Keaton Beach and, and the Deacon Beach area, somewhere where I work.
That's my understanding.
And when is that gonna, what's the deadline?
I don't know the deadline, but you know, once you see groundbreaking, if you want to buy a store there.
I was just asking, because we've been hearing that for three years.
Yeah, I have never heard that, but I have, I have started hearing that the last month I'd been told that there was a, not a general coming to that location.
They're gone. Businesses are gone.
Yes. About the finance, where you're going over the budget, is there a way to get anything? You're talking about the buckets that you were, that we're trying to cut off. Is there a way to get anything with the line items of what is actually in the, in these budgets to be able to compare to see what is being cut?
Meaning like our constitutional items that we went over?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you could give them. I mean, it's public knowledge, so yeah, you could.
It, it's on our website, and, and I'll be happy to show you how to find it. If you just come see me after the meeting, I'll show you where it is.
When you were saying that we're gonna cut ten percent here, or?
And you could probably read the newspaper in the next day or so, that's probably what you're gonna do. Anyone else?
Well, I wasn't sure. Jim Zerber, Steen Hatchie, thank you, Chairman. A few months ago, my wife and I made the offer to put that gazebo back, the only scenic overlook in all of Steen Hatchie on the Taylor County River other than the bridge. Staff is hopefully gonna come out and look at what a homeowner has one. It needs a little bit of work, probably a couple, two or three thousand dollar gazebo if you want to buy one. And we were willing to pay to get it put over there, of course, you know, with the county looking and make sure it's okay. Otherwise, we're gonna lose that opportunity, because the guy's gonna do something with it. He's gonna sell it. And you just kind of wonder, eventually, we got to start thinking down the road, too, you know?
What, what are you saying now?
It's where the West Wind, it's what I mentioned before, it's where the West Wind Marina used to be. And, you know, the developer put in the gazebo and the picnic tables, metal ones that are, they're still there. So it's an upscale, I mean, this was, you know, it looked like something that the landing would have, right? And it vanished during the storm. And I think that Wanda, she's been, everybody, Mr. Dempsey's been, I looked at it a couple years ago, when I thought that the developer, the new people they bought it, had entered that company property. So anyways, the staff can, if you can direct staff to possibly follow up on that, you know, that person, and hopefully it's able to go to five acres.
Mr. Chairman, they actually have, our staff is aware of the owner and that potential as far as maintaining that access to the, for the public to the waterway there. That's adjacent to the boat ramp, that parcel. So our staff does have the contact information, and my understanding is that they were making contact with this individual. But this could be, as Mr. Zerber referenced, a savings. This was a, it's a manufactured, so this wasn't just homemade, you know, this, this was purchased by a manufacturer. And I think our staff could certainly quantify its structurability and potentially save the cost of the, the piece itself, and then whatever we have for placement fees or removal and then. But you knew that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Jim, you said you was gonna put that, you and Miss Pack?
Yeah, we're in our adventure, unless it's two arms and a leg, you know, I can donate a leg. And I don't believe that the developer actually kept ownership. I'm very sure if the county for sure has insurance on that building. I think Wanda was gonna look into that. It wasn't even an itemized.
It would be under what we would insure. We would not carry insurance on that.
So anyways, it's, believe me, I looked at it. I was impressed. I thought it had potential. I'm using, like, everything pretty much first class that I can, and it has all kind of potential, especially at a time like now, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we just need to, to get the quantification from our, our staff, number one, its structurability and, you know, that we could safely transport it and, and place it there. So, so we, you know, we want to make certain that it's not gonna create liability for the public, you know, it's obviously for the public's use. The, the tables are still there. They didn't go away with Helene's gazebo. I have no idea where it might have landed. So this, this would be probably an effort that, that would shorten the, the process in respect to procuring and the costs of, I have no idea in today's cost what, what that, you know, would run our taxpayers. So it would be a savings in numerous ways. And likely could, could be placed there in time for the season, for the enjoyment of the public going forward.
All right, anyone else?
I have one more question, sorry. So down at Keaton, when the hurricane went through, of course, there is no more Keaton Beach restrooms or anything for the public. We continue to have public people, you know, the public come out and go down there. So is there an agenda or a plan to rebuild what was there or even the dock? There is, okay, thank you.
We have, and we have restrooms at the boat ramps. Of course, there are no restrooms left down at the beach. Do you feel like there's a need at the beach for restrooms?
Yes.
I'll check on that. Lisa Wilt. W I L T.
You have to get in a car to go to, you know, the boat ramp to go to the bathroom. And you know they're not gonna.
All right, we'll move on to the board informational items, Mr. Feagle.
Does anybody, so Mr. Moody, do you know, does, does Pimple Creek, I guess it's Pimple Creek that runs through the city's part there?
That, that Spring Creek runs through the city.
Yeah, but do you know, does that flow somehow or another all the way to Hampton Springs?
It goes into Rocky Creek, and Rocky Creek goes into the Penn Hollowway, goes right by Hampton Spring into the Penn Hollowway.
Okay, so would that be behind the property that's being considered to be sold or through it?
On the west side of it.
Behind it. Just behind it?
Right.
Okay, okay. Because I, I, someone brought me a big notebook full of stuff today that they had been working on to afford a, a new adventure that started at the city and ended up down there. So I, I can't say much about it, because I haven't, obviously, had time to read a book that thick.
So that, that creek that you're talking about, it connects to Rocky Creek on?
Woods Creek.
It's off of Woods Creek, but it's on that, it's on the landowner, our local landowner that owns a lot of property here, wherever it connects inside their property. Then it goes down across Ninety-Eighth. So I've fished a lot of, I take my kids, and they fished a lot of that connection there with.
You got Pimple Creek, you got Spring Creek, they all flow into the same place and go into the Penn Hollowway.
I kind of thought so, but I wasn't sure.
And Woods Creek, too. The Woods Creek comes underground and comes back up, and that spring there off of, out of Edge of Sound, I hear, comes back up, and it's right off.
They all come into?
The street, the street, street headed into it.
They all come into Penn Hollowway at some point.
Right by Three Nelson's there, that bridge there, before you get Three Nelson's out, you know, Pimple Creek.
Right. But it all goes somewhere down Ninety-Eighth that?
They do. They all go into Rocky Creek and go into the Penn Hollowway. Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Yeah, I did get a compliment on the county cleaning up the golf course roads and bucket roads.
Slow progress.
And asked me, asked you, and then she called back and twisted text really, said she appreciated that. But we still have a lot to bring out there and clean up.
Mr. Newman? Mr. Moody? All right, if there's nothing else, let's hand the question to you there. Mr. Feagle, say it, Mr. Newman, all in favor?